Okay guys, so we are good to start. Fine, so let's start. So hopefully you are or my voice is audible to you and you are able to see the screen. Now, we started with continuous development, we told that we will be dealing with source code management. And constantly my customers need a change in the functionality and hence I will be continuously changing the code. So I have the design with me, I know what I have to do and I am making the code changes as per the customer requirement. So I am here in my software development life lifecycle. Here I will learn about Git where I will learn how to merge the code with the existing pipeline. So the first phase is code merge or to develop the code and merge the code. Here in this training as of Git, we will learn what is version control system, we will learn what is distributed version control system. What is Git, GitHub, what is Git architecture? When I say fork and clone, what do I mean by that? When I say collaborators, merge, rebase, branch, what do I mean by that? A common commands which I use in Git and the demonstration how it works. So yesterday when I started, I started with the example, I told that I have a developer. I have a new developer who has joined my code or some guy who has joined my team. And he has introduced a broken code or he made some changes because of which the production is gone wrong. So the first and the foremost thing is we will ask like who did the change? When was the changes done? So I will want to know every code change, its timing, what was changed, who changed it? So in short, I want to track every change. So that tomorrow if something goes wrong, I can revert the change. Or if some enhancement is required, then on top of that I make, I can make the changes. So we start talking about SCM, which is also known as source code management. Here we basically talk about VCS or version control. When I say version control, we are majorly talking about maintaining multiple versions of the same code. So with the help of version control, I will be able to document the change for a single file or a set of files. The users will be allowed to maintain multiple versions of the same code. And a snapshot can be generated, snapshot is a stable version, I can see. So whenever I make a minor change from work, let me say now I am in version one. So if I make a minor change, I will say version 1.1. But if I make a major change, I will say version 2.0. So like that you will see the versions keep upgrading. So I showed you that Tomcat is there, it's a software. Or Java, if you talk about any software, you will see every time they update a new version. If you are using an Android phone or Apple phone or anything, you will see that they are updating every time. And every time they update, they maintain multiple versions. Let me say there is a user who doesn't want to update, so he can continue with his old version. So all the versions are functional and kept alive. Obviously after sometime they will scrap the old versions, like today if I go for Apple phones, so Apple 11, Apple 10 is available in the market. But if somebody says I want Apple 6, then probability is not available because it has been scrapped. So this is how they change the softwares or they upgrade the softwares. Now, when we talk about version control, I have two ways in which I can do a version control. One is S, one is CBCS, which is centralized version control system. In centralized version control system, I have one central repo and I put everything there. The problem with this is there is a single point of failure, means anything you do, you will be doing here only in this central repo. If this particular server or the central repo fails, everything will be failed. So what I do is I go with DVCS, means distributed version control practice, distributed version control system. Now when I talk about DVCS, I have two copies, one is my local copy, the other one is my central or a remote repository. So when I say central or a remote repository, I am talking about making changes at two places. So whenever I want to make a change, the first I will go to my working copy, I will make whatever changes I have to. And then I will commit the change to my local repository. From there I will push the changes to remote or the central repository. So anytime I have at least two copies of my code. And if the central fails, local is present, if local fails, central is present. In my example, central repository for me will be GitHub and the local repository will be Git. So my next topic which we discussed yesterday was this guy. Where we said there are two different things, Git and GitHub. So one should not get confused, there are two different stuffs. Git is a software which can be installed in your local machine, it can be downloaded. And it is giving you a CLI to start your work. Whereas GitHub is more of a web service, a website. It is hosted on internet, you just need to log into internet and get going with GitHub. So it's a web service, it is not a software which you can install on your local machine. And it gives you a UI from where you can download and from where you can work. But at the end of the day, both of them should be linked with each other, it is very much important. Now there is a question here, the question says what's the best practice? Do few changes in GAA and GC or minimum changes? Do see, changes can be done anywhere, there is no restriction. In fact, distributed version control system encourages you to make as many changes as much you want. So if you on a daily basis, if you want to make hundred changes, you can go ahead and do the changes. But there is something called Git branching strategy. So you should follow that strategy and you should do the changes accordingly. So I'll show you how to do that. Then we talked about this guy, I told that any developer who is developing the code, he must first push the code to local repository and then to the remote repository. If he keeps the code in his local, then it will never go to the reporter, remote repository. And if it does not go to the remote repository, this developer, this developer will not be able to see the content. So if this guy is changing, he has to bring it here. This guy is changing, he has to bring it here. And every time this remote repository is the source of truth. Whatever is present here is the latest code for me. Even if you have the latest code but you have not pushed, so I will not count you, I will count this guy as my latest code. Git add all can be done, if you are confident that all the code changes which you have done are correct, you can add everything. There is no restriction on adding all the code which you have changed. Now, this is how my architecture of Git looks like. At the center, there will be a central repository or a remote repository. Every developer will have their own local copy or working copy. First they will update to their own respective local copy and then finally to central repository. So we have done all these things, so I am going a bit fast here. But now we will go ahead and talk further about this, one second. One second, right, one second. Give me one second please. Okay, so Vishwa has a question here, let me take it from if GitHub having all the Git updates, is there any user detail mentioned over there? If something goes wrong for a particular Git user, then can come to know. See those details will be there, I'll show you, but user details are not important, okay? The important thing is what code is there? So code details are more important than the user details. So I will be more interested in the code, the files which I store in GitHub rather than going by the user. But anyhow, the user details are also present here. If the same object is changed by two developers, they pushed the code to the central repo at the same time. Good in this, in this case will it work? There are chances it will work, there are chances it will not work. So yesterday in the class I told you, let me say there is a code and the code is of hundred lines, just giving a random example. So I am saying there is a code and the code is of hundred lines. Let me just come here. Okay, so let me say the code is of hundred lines. Now if the first developer has changed in the first five lines. First five lines. And the other developer has changed from sixty-five to seventy-five. Okay, because they have changed the same code but at different places, there will be something called auto merge. And the changes will move or will go. But if the first developer is changing from one to five, line number one to five. And the second developer is also changing from one to five, then there will be a merge conflict. So I will teach this, what is merge conflict, why it happens? So I will teach you both the things, but hold on, today only we will learn, but give me some time as and when the topic will come, I will go with that. So what I am going to do now is I am going to install Git on my local machine. And then also I am going to have a GitHub account which we have already done. So I am assuming that you have a GitHub account, so you can come here and say github.com. And if you have a GitHub account, simply you have to come here and say github.com and backslash your ID, so my, one second. Okay, so I made arrangement. Local machines means EC2, yes, local machine means EC2 or your local PC or your Mac machine, whatever you say. So what I am going to do is I am going to parallelly work on both of them. So first is I will go to cloud and I will take an EC2 instance. So if you remember yesterday I created an EC2 instance, I have kept it in a stopped state. So okay, this is running, so I can come here and log into my instance. So I can directly login by clicking on connect, this is the IP address, this is the default user, connect. Okay, so now you say sudo hyphen, you become a root user and then the name of the server I have given is Git server. So this is my local, now yesterday I installed Git. So if you go back and say yum install git minus y, you can see it is saying nothing to do because Git is already installed. Git minus minus version, Git is there. So now what I will do is I'll create a folder. Adam minus other. Let me see if I have something. Okay, I have something here, let me delete it first. RM minus RF, so I am deleting it, okay, Git. So if you see here, as of now I don't have anything, okay, nothing is there. I'll go to my GitHub and in my GitHub I will go to my user. So this is my user, I told we can create repositories, these repositories can be a new one or a old one. So let me just come here. So this is some repository which I created in the morning, I am going to delete it, okay? Because I am going to do everything fresh here, so I am going to delete everything. Anyhow, so this time again what I am going to do, I am going to create a new repository from here, I'll create a repository, I will say new repository. Okay, and I will say the repository name is Git, I'll get today's date only, so it is twenty-one zero seven. So this name is available, so it says Git is available, you can say demo Git repo. Okay, or you can say demo Git remote slash central. So this is my central repo. Now you decide whether it has to be public or private, yesterday we spoke about this. What can go in public, what can go in private? Private when it is very much company specific, you don't want to share it with other people. Private means you are very much with those set of people, okay? So private I am not creating, I am creating it as public, create a repo. Now I'll create this with the same name, a folder with the same name. Come here, say mkdir and the name of the folder. Now cd go inside that folder. ls minus L, nothing is there, ls minus LE, nothing is there. So I will say git in it. So I told the first interview question here can be what is git in it, why should I do git in it? So if you read this, git in it is the initial command or the first command which you should run. So it says if you run git init command, it will go ahead and initialize a empty Git repository for you. And what is there inside this empty Git repository? This is that dot Git thing, this telling dot Git. You can see this dot Git here, if you go inside this dot Git thing, you will get all your content, all your content in the sense. The content related to Git branch config head, all those things will be there. So we will see one by one what is that thing. But to start with, the first command which I should run is git in it because I want to initialize a empty Git repository. Or in short, I can say that the commands corresponding to Git should be recognized here. So that I am typing git init command, if I don't, then it will not recognize the Git commands. Okay, I can show you a demo, cd dot dot, let me come out.
Hello sir.
Yeah please.
Yeah, can we give different name in a local, despite you have create a
You give a name, name is not important. Let me see, you give a name as mkdir, you say git one, two, three. Give this name, go ahead, there is no problem with the name.
Awesome, it's a different, completely different name from the getter, correct?
Yes, you can give any name. Now here if I come back and it's a different repository, okay, it is git one, two, three. Now here if I want to run a command, git add, see here it will throw me error, not a Git repository. So it is not able to find this dot Git folder, okay? Fine, yeah, any questions?
Other questions?
Yeah please.
Very important, create the folder before type the git in it, right?
Yes, get in it, once you create a folder, go inside the folder and then type git in it.
Alright, thanks.
Yeah. Okay, so I showed you that if I go inside a different folder which I was this git one, two, three. And I try to run a git command, it gives me an error, see here, this is the error. Fatal, not a Git repository because it is not able to find dot Git. So what I did is I went back to my original folder which was git two, one, zero, seven. And here if I do ls minus LA, I will be able to see my dot Git. Now here I can run my Git related commands. So let me clear all these things first. Now at the same time, I have also created a repository on my GitHub. Now the first thing which I should do is I should link both of them together. Why? Because at the end of the day, both have to talk with each other. So it says ignore the first command, not required. It says git in it, so I have already done. The second command is git add and there is a file, but I don't have anything. So first I will create a file and then I will do a git add. So let me create a file, so I will say nano, let me say I am writing a Python code, so python dot py. Go here and see, import import uh, numpy A is equal to five. B is equal to six. C is equal to A plus B and I am finally saying print the sum of two numbers is, and then you say is equal to, then you say what is your variable C. So this is my code, okay? So it is importing a numpy, means number function with Python. I am declaring two variables, doing addition and printing the value, capital X, Y, enter. Now I made a code change. So I made a code change, python dot py. Now it can be anything, it can be a text file, you can give without parentheses also, it will work, don't worry. Anyhow, we are not concentrating on the code, we are concentrating on the Git movement. So now I have changed my code, okay? One second. So I will now go ahead and say git status. Give me one minute, git status. So I am saying git status, it is saying you are on master branch. No commit has been done yet, there is an untracked file. If you want to add this file, do a git add and then the file name. To include what will be committed, means if you want to make that change move ahead, you should do a git add. It says nothing added to the commit but untracked files are there, so use git add. So basically what I am trying to do here is this is my working tree, this is where I am right now, I am trying to do a git add. Okay, so for now I am trying to move from this working tree to staging area. See here, this is, this is local repo, everything, there are three stages in local repo. In local repo, there are three stages, working tree, staging area and local branch, okay? And then there is a remote repo here, so so again, those two things are there, one is my local repo and the other one is remote repo. So local and remote, two things are there. In remote, only one remote repo is there, so don't worry about remote repo. But if you come to local repo, there are three places, working tree where I started my work. Then the moment I do git add, it goes to staging area. From staging area it says do git commit, then it will go to my local branch and from there do a git push, it will go here. So first I will do a git add. So if you see here, it is also telling do a git add, so come here and say git add. And this file name. Now come here and say git status, STU S, so it is saying commit has not been done, you have not committed the code. If you want to unstage the change, unstage means you want to push it back. Means from here you brought your code till here, but if you want to push it back, you don't want to take it ahead. Say git rm minus minus cast means remove the changes, okay? But in case you want to take it ahead, say git commit. Here also you will see it is asking you to do the same thing. Git commit minus M for the message and give any message of your choice, it can be any message, okay? Sorry, run this, same thing, git commit minus M, first commit. Now what will happen, this change will move from here staging area to local branch, this branch. So let me show you that. So this is git status, every time you can come and check the status, STA EUS. Now here it says on the master branch, nothing to commit, working tree is clean. It means whatever changes you have done, you started from here, working tree. You took all the way to staging area from by doing git add and from there you took all the way to your local branch by git commit and then finally now we will do a git push. But we did with git add, git commit, we are here at our local branch. Now come back here. So these are the commands which I was supposed to run, git in it, git add, git commit, done. Now there is a small problem here, the problem is that long back, long back, let me show you, github dot com. Yahoo, so Yahoo was also using, okay? So Yahoo is a paid account, so if you go to some account which was created long back. See here, the default branch is master, okay? But when you create a new branch, okay, so let me say I am creating a new branch. A new repository. Let me save. Hello world, this is what I created, see here, it is main. So earlier, earlier Git default branch was master. But somehow Git thought that it is a offensive word, master slave is offensive word. So they came up with a new word called as main. So any repository which you see old, past ten years, seven years back, that will have the default name as master, but anything which is new, okay? That will have the default branches main, so I also want the default branches main. But if I come here to my this guy, say git branch. I can see master is my default branch. So I don't want master to be my default branch. So what I am going to do is I am going to run this piece of code, git branch minus M, capital M, main. So the simple meaning of this is that make main my default branch, git branch minus M, main. So now if you come here and run this command, git branch, you will see main is your default branch. Okay, now one more command is there, now here it says every time you don't have to give me this big URL. Okay, you can also give me a small name like this origin. So I am doing a kind of renaming, so instead of using this big URL, I will use this small name. So I will say git remote add, git remote add origin and this is the URL. So now if I come here and say git remote minus V, these commands are there in the cheat sheet. So you, that's why I asked you to go with the cheat sheet, anyhow if you have not gone through, don't worry. Uh, you will be learning them with practice. So I, if I say git remote minus V, I will see this big URLs is given a short name as origin. If you want to give another name, I want to give the name as door, window, mobile phone, give any name. This URL can now be represented by a small name as origin. So what's the next command? The next command is git push minus U origin main. So git push is the last thing which I am trying to do here. So I am at my local branch, from here I want to push it to my remote branch, okay? But to push to remote branch, I will need password. The password I will get from here, just be very careful when I am doing this, so come to your name. Oh, go to this, this guy, the here, go to settings. Oh, go to this, this guy, the, here, go to settings. And in settings, go to developer setting. Personal access token. And here, if you don't have anything, first time you, if you are coming, you will see something like this. Go ahead and say, generate a new token. And you give a to, some name. It is git token. I will say after thirty days it should expire or let me say, there is no expiration, it will not expire. Now, I am going to give all the access to myself because I am a admin user, I will give all access to myself. But. When you are working in a production environment, definitely you are not going to get all the access. So let me just come here. And give all the access. So I am generating a token. Now this token is generated. Now it is only one time you can see it. Next time when you come back, you will not be able to see it. So do one thing, you copy it and keep it somewhere. So I generally what I do, I copy it and keep it safe. So let me just copy this. Uh, and come here, in my home, I have one folder. I am keeping it here and I will save it, okay? So I have generated a access token. We need to create a branch to avoid modification to master, that's the purpose, no. Uh, only, uh, only, I will call you only, okay? So only, I just now told you that when we started. Four years, five years back with git, git default repo or default branch was master. But master was an offensive word, so they told, we will remove that offensive word and make it as main. And that's the reason I went ahead and made it as main. What is the purpose of working tree, local repo and remote repo? So Shambala, this is the architecture of Git. They have designed it so that various developers can parallelly work in a distributed environment. And none of them go ahead and bother the other user, okay? So that's the reason for this. So this is the architecture of Git. You have working tree, you have staging area and then you have local branch. And from there, all the way you go to your remote branch or your remote repo. So we did a git add, we did a git commit, now we are doing a git push. So to do a git push, I need the command. So if you come back here, this is the command, git push minus U. U is for your username, origin is for this link, this link and main is for your. Remote branch or the default branch which you have created. So I am going to run this command. Git push minus U, origin main, enter. The moment you get enter, it will ask you for your username. So I will give my username as Vikas nine nine three four one. Don't give my username, you give your username. Now it is asking me for password. Remember, this password is not. The password which you use to login, okay? This is not the same password. This is the token. Here, they are asking you for the token, this token. They are asking you for the token. Where is the token here? How to control A, control C and go here and do control V? I told you, in Unix, it will look like it did not get pasted, but it actually got pasted. So, enter. So now if you see here, it gives you a message. Done. The object was moved hundred percent. It was two seventy-nine bytes and it moved with two seventy-nine kilobytes. Per second speed and a new branch, main was created and it has been moved to origin main. So now if I come here, okay? And instead of this, I refresh this guy. I can see, python first commit and nine minutes ago it was posted. This is the commit ID. If you click on this. If you click on this, you can see a commit ID, okay? Now, I will also want to see the commit ID here because I am saying both are same. So here if you want to see the commit ID. You can come here and say, git log. So git log is showing you the commit ID. This is a very big commit ID. If you want to see the short form of this, one line. See here, the commit ID is this, seven digit, E F three eight seven two B. So if you come here. Here, E F three eight seven two B. And if you see the code change here. You can see the same set of lines. Now, somebody again wants to make the code change. So what you should do, you should clear out everything, come back here. And, once again. So I can see my code, python dot py. I am going to make changes to this code. So let me say, I am saying A is equal to fifty-eight and C is equal to sixty. I made some changes, control X, Y, enter. Now, I have made changes to the code. What will happen? Git status. It is saying, the code, python dot py has been modified. If you want to take it ahead, do git add. If you want to revert the changes, do git restore. Again, the same thing it is talking about. I am in working tree. If you want to take it ahead, do a git add. If you want to take it back or revert the change, do git restore. Git restore or git add. I want to take it ahead. So git add and then I will say, the file name, python dot py. Okay, now I will again come here and say, git status. Now you can see that code has been modified, it has turned into green. So it is saying, it is there in the staging area. If you want to take it back from staging area. So it is here, it is, if you want to take back. Then run this command, git restore minus minus staged. But if you want to take it ahead, you say, git commit minus M. And what is the message here? Second. Commit. Okay, and enter. So here it is saying, second commit done. So now I have moved the change till here, local branch. Now I should do git push. So for that, the command is. Uh, hello sir. One second, one second, I will take your questions also. So I am doing a git push minus U for the user origin main. Here it will ask me for my username, Vikas nine nine three four one. And password, password is this guy, control C. And control V, enter. So now this change has been moved. Now let me clear all these things. Come here and say, git log minus minus one line. I can see the head or the latest commit is pointing to this guy, E A zero F four sixty-seven. And this is second commit, I can see here. Okay, if I simply say git log. Now this is what I come to, I get the entire history. I now know that the author or the person who made these changes is having this as his user ID. This has his commit, this has his email ID. This is the date and time when he has changed, okay? And he changed with a message as second commit, okay? And this is his commit ID. Now I want to know what was changed. I will say, git show. And the commit ID. See here, it was minus means these two lines were removed and plus means these two lines were added. So now, I am exactly able to see what changes were made, who made the changes, when was made the change made. So I know everything about the changes. Can we go and check in our GitHub also? Whether it is there or not because I pushed the changes. So you can come here. As of now, you can see only one commit here, refresh this guy. So I can see here now, two commits are there. If you go to history, you can see, first commit, second commit. And if you want to go and check in the code, you just go here and we will show you the same thing. Earlier, this was the code. Now, this is the code. Now, let me take questions one by one. Uh, your font size can is too small, okay? I will make it big. Uh, we need to create a branch. Your font size is too big, was too small, he is telling, okay? I don't think I will be able to edit here, but let me give it a try. One second, and I will just show you the history of the commands, what all commands I ran. Okay, I am able to, good thing of touchscreen.
Uh, hello sir, you have, uh, so the two commands, it is like a get restored. So there are two, one is in a staging area and one is normally.
Yes.
I am audible. So, if we push, uh, if we put this command, get restored and staging area something. So, uh, where the code goes, means, uh, in our working day or where this goes?
Wait, I will, I will answer. Give me one minute. I will take all the questions which are there before that. Let me take, I will come to your question. Okay. Font size I have increased and I have given the, uh, commands, the set of commands which I have run. That link, we never give our. GitHub link. You don't have to get, give your GitHub link now because if you remember, I have done something like this. I told that I am not going to give this link anymore, this big link anymore. Rather, I will just say origin. So if I am saying origin, I am basically pointing to this big guy and that's why I am not giving this GitHub link anymore. I am simply saying origin. So whenever I have to do a push, I simply come here and say, origin. Because I am. Abbreviating it with a different name. Now. If we forget and type the login ID rather than login key, so if you give wrong credentials, the changes will not go ahead. So it will say bad credentials and it will not work. Let me show you again. So if I come here and say. Git push. Okay. Suppose I give my username wrong. Okay. It will ask me password. So it will not be able to find. It says, the password authentication was removed and it has failed. So authentication failed error I will give. So you should give your credentials correct, then only it will work, else it will not work. Okay, how did you approach to Git Bash screen when you are giving commands from UI? Git bash. These are two different tabs. I, when I was teaching, I told that there, I will be working parallelly on two things. One is GitHub and this is my Git which I have installed on my EC2. Okay. Okay, now anyone having any more questions, if I missed your question or if I am not answered your question, please, you can put it again, I will answer it now. Please, can you repeat the class, how to create an instance on AWS? Okay, I will share that link with you, please, you can go ahead. And Ravi, you can get in touch with your coordinator, they will share the details with you.
Uh, because when you. Man, select a date, uh, comment, you are giving the small M, I mean, this is true. I have a small M and a file name and in another command you have used, uh, I have a capital, what difference between those two?
These are two different commands. Why I have done so?
The means.
One second. See, whatever I am doing here, okay? It is as per the. Standards of this guy, what you say, uh, Git. So I am not doing anything with my own, this thing. So let me just come back. So when we do a Git, so this is what we did, right? When we work with Git branch, we are giving capital M, okay?
Yes.
Module main. So Git branch, module main, okay? This is a different command altogether. But when, at the same time, I go ahead and say, git commit, I say small M. So small M is for message, capital M is for module.
Yes.
Now, who decide all these things? It is decided by Git, the company, the software is, has decided all the things. So, I am not the one who is making decision. So all these things are coming from the direct.
Okay.
So now.
Give that, uh. Yeah.
Okay.
So we will get an error if we don't give this, uh, capital M on the modular message. I will use. The command.
Yes.
Uh, sir, what does mean my modules and this, uh, command means? I didn't get what it means in modules.
The question was, why are you putting somewhere capital M and somewhere you are putting as small M? So I told, when you are using git commit, you use small M. Small M denotes message. And this is the message what we have written, okay? First commit, second commit, whatever you write. This is the message. When I use this command. Once again, let me just come back here. Just now, some command. Just now, saw that command. Anyhow, I can type that command again, that's no problem. So I think it. Branch minus M. Now, when I want to change the branch, because earlier my default branch was master. But now I want to change it to main. So this capital M stands for module. So I am saying, I am going to use a branch module. So this is capital M. Okay, now, hopefully this is clear. Now two things, how will I know these commands? So I told you, you have to start your journey with Git cheat sheet. Cheat sheet will exactly tell you what is what. There are lots of commands, but I am not expecting you to buy heart everything. Like, git commit minus M. What does it mean? Git add, what is mean? So git in it, what is the meaning? So just keep an eye on this. But. The knowledge will only come when you start your work or you come here. Do your hands. Now, this particular thing must be followed. So you should do a git add, then git commit and then git push. If you directly want to do a git push, it will not work. So make sure that you follow the sequence. The sequence is mandatory. Without the architecture, it will not go ahead. Okay, so the command sequence is very simple. Git add, git commit, git push. Now, let me say, I am having the latest code, I am working with the latest code. But I was working in the background, somebody came and he changed the code. Did you give W? Where did you get the link from? Where did you take the link from? This is my repository. Vikas to nine nine three four one is my repository. I have created it. So in the beginning of the class, I told you that you are also supposed to go ahead to GitHub. GitHub dot com, sign in with your credentials. And then you can come here and see. So this is my credentials or this is my account which I have created. And this is the repository we are working with. Git one. Zero seven. This is what I have created and updated eleven minutes ago. Now. What I am trying to do is, I am working with my code, okay? But apparently, somebody came here and he did a change. So let me, I tell you, nobody should directly change here. But just to show you a demo, I am showing you that somebody directly came here and made the changes. Like, he came here, he has access. So he made the changes. He made this five eight double zero and this six eight nine nine. Something like he made the changes and he came here and say. Heard, commit. See. Now, what happens here? There are three comments. But what happens here? I have only two comments. Means, if I start changing on this, I am not. I have only two comments, means if I start changing on this, I am not working with the latest code, okay? So what I will do is, I will check whether the code is latest or not. Just to check, I have the command as git fetch. So git fetch. Git fetch will just tell me that there is a problem. This is your commit. E A zero F four C seven and the latest commit on GitHub is five five A nine zero D C. Let me just show you. So here. Five five A nine zero D C, this is the latest commit. So this is what it is saying, so git fetch will only tell you that there is a problem. It will not do anything apart from that. It's a very common interview question, what is the purpose of git fetch? Why we use git fetch? So git fetch will only tell you that there is a problem. So I came to know that there is a problem, but I need the latest code because I don't have the latest code. The code which I have is only with second commit, I want the latest code, how to do that? So here if you see, there is a command called git pull. It will pull the code from remote repository all the way to your working tree. Come here and say git pull and you need to give origin because the URL or you give the entire URL, you just say git pull origin. And here it says one file changed. Now if you come here and say git log minus minus one line. You will see. We are seeing all the three changes. So it is always recommended that before you start your work, you must do a git pull. First do a git fetch. Git fetch will tell you whether the latest code is there or not. So now I have the latest code. So if I do a git fetch, it is not giving me anything. Means I have the latest code. If I don't have the latest code, it will show me that there is a problem, something like this, it was showing me here, right? It was showing me here. Okay, so it was telling that you are here only, second commit only. But already somebody has done one more commit, so you should do a git pull. So now it is doing a git pull and it is giving you the latest change. And git pull is good, why git pull is good? Because it will only pull the changes, it will not pull everything. There is one same command, very similar command like git pull only, there is one more command. Let me just come out and RM minus RF. Let me remove this report. So there is one more command, git clone. Now git clone means it will take everything, okay? So I will show you git clone and then I will ask one question to all of you. Come here. Take this URL, this URL you take, copy this URL, come here and say control V. So git clone means cut paste. Okay, cut paste means everything will be copied. Whether it is there, it is not there, doesn't matter. See here. Uh huh. Git fetch will tell you what is the problem. If there is a problem, git pull will only pull the latest change. If there is no, nothing to do, so if I do git pull. But I already have the latest code, see here, it will tell already up to date. So it will check what is the change and that will only will be copied or pulled. If I do a git clone, whether it is there or not, everything will be pulled. So just do one thing, git fetch versus git pull versus git clone, pass it. So these are the three commands and you should know the difference between three commands. So your homework will be, please go and explore these three commands. There will be many interview questions, what is the difference between git fetch, git pull and git clone? I have already explained, but please go ahead and do it once more. It is just fetch the latest update, yes, git fetch will just fetch the latest update. For Mac, it's better to, to, to do SSH, yeah, for Mac, better to do SSH and start your work. Because you have a terminal there.
Sir, uh, hello.
Yeah.
Yeah, get a feature that your code also come with get pitch or just committed uh, uh, thing has come.
No, the committed code will only come.
Okay, okay.
Guys, anybody having any question, please go ahead.
No, because I have one question.
Yeah, please.
Like this, yeah, this, so the thing is like we have a remote repository, right? So like I have, I have created my personal repository in remote. And now suppose two guys like I am, I am bringing another guys, we have like uh, we using the two different system. Now, do we have to create our local repo in the both the system?
Yes, yes, both of you have to create your own local repo and this is what I explained in the beginning. If you remember this place.
So that, that to create the local repo, we have to use that git clone actually, you know?
You do a git clone, it will clone everything for you.
Yeah, okay. So there we can see all the changes, whatever changes we have to do in our local. Then we have to push towards the main uh, remote repo.
Yes, so every developer will have its own copy and finally he has to push it to central repository.
Okay.
Sir, hello, sir. So firstly, if we create new repository, so firstly we can put the one get clone. So we can on the all the course in our.
Clone, you should avoid using git clone, git clone is copy paste everything, okay?
Yeah.
Rather you do git pull, pull is better, pull means only the changed thing will be copied.
Uh, no, if we create a new repository, new.
A new repository, then you do a git clone.
And after that we can always put our git pull, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And get, get fetch for the changes that uh, and everyone does, correct? That committed.
Of course. Okay, so I told you, if you remember only that in the first class only, if you see a hash here in the starting. It is a root user, if it is a normal user like EC2 user. You will see it is a dollar, so dollar means normal user, hash means root user. Can you close the instance and show us to avoid getting charges? Yes, you can close the instances, obviously if you close the instance from here. One second, if you close the instance from here, automatically in the background also it will get closed. So if I stop my instance from here. This terminal which I am running, okay, I am stopping this instance. This terminal which I am running will automatically shut down, so it is not working, it is shut off. Okay, so now I will close everything here, we meet tomorrow again same time and we resume from there.
Uh, hello sir.
Yeah.
Uh, sir, I don't know much about A W, about AWS, so this AWS also cover in this course or?
Yes, do one thing, just follow the classes on a daily basis, you will know everything about DevOps, everything about AWS. See you then guys, the slides I will share with your coordinator, please get in touch with your coordinator, get the slides from there. See you then guys, bye bye.